Wood Avenue, uh, for Tona Park, Morrison, um, uh, Avenue. Um, I decided to run for office because for one, I am a tenant leader, a community advocate, a single mother who's fighting for real affordable housing. We're tired of being misled. We're tired of our current elected officials who continue to disservice the residents. We are so sick and tired of, you know, not having businesses of our own. We're so tired of our broken educational system. We're tired of living in poverty. We're tired of living in a poor environment that's affecting our children, our senior citizens, our disabled and our families. I decided to step up because I, being that I'm the leader and the voice of the people, we want to see change. I am fighting to give the Bronx back to the working families. I am fighting for our immigrant families. I am fighting for our LGBTQ community. I am fighting for all of us. This is about unity. This is about bringing communities of color together. I am tired of the political machines and systemic racism that we are being subjected to. It is time for new, bold leadership. And I'm willing to go through this fight with my fellow sisters with Shaniqua and Tiffany and Sheba. Together, we are fighting up against a big fight. And I know that we can do it and we need to get more moms in office. We need to see more black women in office. And this is why I'm running for office. I'm bringing change to the community. I am not part of any establishment. I am the voice of the people and it is time for us to have some new leaders. Thank you so much.
Well, hi, everyone. Hi, y'all. I'm Shaniqua Moore. As you can hear from my use of y'all, I am not a New York native, but I am originally from Louisiana. But I've been in New York City for over 15 years and I have called Lower Manhattan my home for all of those 15 years. I'm currently running to represent Lower Manhattan on the New York City Council. That's District One, and that covers communities such as, you know, Chinatown, the Lower East Side, the Financial District, Battery Park, Tribeca, Soho, Greenwich Village. So it is a very diverse district. It's very interesting because, you know, District One is comprised of, you know, zip codes that have some of the richest people, some of the most expensive zip codes in, in America. But we also have, uh, working class individuals, low income individuals who also live in that same district and we are coexisting together. When I relocated here to New York City, I knew absolutely no one. I'll take it back. I knew two people, all of these. And I knew when I came here, I wanted to get involved in my community, such as I'd been taught, you know, while growing up. I come from a family of people who we were on the front line, making sure our neighbors got registered to vote, making sure our neighbors had rights, rights to the polls, ensuring that our neighbors knew what was on the ballot and who was on the ballot. And so it's just, it's just a part of who I am, you know, as I was growing up. And I tell people all the time, because I push people to vote in any and every election, local elections, off-year elections, federal state, it doesn't matter. All elections are important. And why it's so important to me is because I frequently tell people that my mother, who, um, you know, was born in her nation of birth, was born 11 years before the 1965 Voter Rights Act. So she essentially was born into a country where she could not even express her right to vote, you know, upon her birth. So that just powers me to want to make sure that I am involved in the community. You know, I am running for city council because I feel that I am like so many people. I am a parent. Um, I am a wife. My daughter attends, um, New York City Public School and my son will be there, all things hoping, starting in September. And there is just a contingent of people who live in our city, who find themselves so busy with taking care of family, living life, working fields. And they so often do not get an opportunity to get involved in our political process. And that means that their voices are not being heard. So I'm really excited to be in the opportunity to bridge that gap among, among people who are, you know, very civically engaged. Um, and then people who may not be, just because they are trying to make it through life. You know, I want to ensure that their voices are heard. So I am here making sure that Lower Manhattan, once again, becomes affordable for individuals. This was a time and place, um, where people did not want to live downtown in Lower Manhattan, right? It just was not the place to live. So I want to make sure that the people have been here for decades, can continue to live here, that they have affordable housing and that is opened up to new people who want to call this community home. Have to ensure, especially in the time of COVID, that we're focusing on small business relief, because our small business owners, we want to make sure that they're here on the other side of COVID, right? We want to make sure that they're still here. And then equity and education, you know, I have to be completely honest and transparent. When my daughter was of age to go to school, and you know, you're a parent and you're trying to decide like, where's my, where's my child going to go to school? I frequently heard from people, "Oh, don't be concerned. You're in District Two. You have nothing to worry about. Every school in District Two is, is, is a quality school, so you'll be fine." And honestly, my daughter does go to a school where I would consider, you know, is quality. And it's quality because we have resources that other schools may not have, financial resources, especially from the parent body. We need to ensure that is the case everywhere. And that is not the case across my entire district or District One. There are schools within a 15-minute walking distance of my daughter's school who do not have those resources that she has. And so that's why we need to focus on equity and education. If all of our students are going to, all of our children are going to get a quality education. So I'm so excited to be here. I say all the time that I am a woman's woman. So if there is a place where women are getting together and they are building community, I am going to be there. So thank you guys for having me tonight. I really appreciate it.
Wow, I'm, that was amazing. Thank you so much, Tiffany, Latina and Sheba. And I will also answer the question. So, and every question that I ask, I'll answer last since I'm asking the questions, so there's a consistent flow. So my name is Shaniqua Moore and I'm running for city council in District 12, which is actually the Northeast Bronx. This is my community where I've grown up since a teenager. I have lived in the Bronx my entire life, so I always call myself a Bronxite. I am proud and raised Boogie Down Bronx, right? So, uh, why am I running for office? Number one, um, as someone that has lived in the Bronx my whole life, I've seen firsthand what it means to be in a community where you don't have resources. I can remember growing up, unfortunately, and seeing a lot of crime in my neighborhoods. A lot of people that I grew up with, they're not here today because they were murdered. Uh, unfortunately, I grew up in high crime areas where I see drug addiction and just a lot of things that little kids should not be exposed to. I didn't realize until after I got out of my community, went away, went away to school for a few years, that there was something wrong with how I grew up. And that was because of systemic racism. So all these years of my life as a young girl, being in poverty and seeing all this stuff. Excuse me. Um, sorry about that. I just got a call. Please don't call me on Messenger. If you are on live, please do not call me on Messenger. Thank you. So seeing all of that as a young girl and growing up, you know, I, that sort of fueled my passion to want to see change in my community. So I started very young at the age of 14 in my first summer job, just serving my community right on Fordham Road, where I was just working in an office and learning how to type. That's when computers were first coming out, hence my age. And, um, and for me, that same drive sort of followed me throughout life. So I started to, you know, getting great in the community. And by, you know, grad school studying policy, I realized that the answer was and, and finding a way to advocate for people on a higher level. So although I love working directly with people as a social worker in other respects, I believe the power is in when you are in policy decision-making positions, where you have the power to really advocate for right policy that black people and minorities really can benefit from. I've found that in a lot of rooms that I've been in, black people have been left out of those rooms. I've found that when it comes to policy, when it comes to politics, these decisions and laws and legislation are being passed without us in the room and it ought not need to be so. So I'm running for office because I want to see change in the Bronx. I am tired, as Latina mentioned earlier, of the black, of the black, uh, community being neglected, of us being disenfranchised. I'm tired of people profiting off of our backs for so many centuries in this country. And I believe that true change is needed. So that is why I'm running for office. I want to see our public schools reimagined. I believe that we really need to do a better job at making sure we support our kids. They deserve to go to school and to, to, to be in a quality school. They deserve to have resources. They deserve to have good books, good teachers and teachers that look like them. They deserve not to be neglected and to go to schools that are safe and that look just as good as the schools that are in Westchester County. We should not be neglected. We've been neglected for far too long because of bad leadership. And so that is why I'm stepping up to the plate, because I want my child and your kids to go to school in a school where they can thrive for real. And so I also want to see affordable housing in my district. It is really sad. There are a lot of developers and I don't want to go on a rampage right here, but I'm gonna try to pull it back in. There are a lot of developers in my community that have been, um, developing, uh, all these different types of developments that are in the land without the permission of the community. And because of that, there's been a lot of increases in, uh, rents and people can't afford to pay rent. And that's really sad. So people are being pushed out of the community and I won't let that happen. So this is why I'm stepping up to the plate. So I'm excited to be here with these wonderful women. And I'm going to move on to the next question before I take up any more time. All right. So the first question, um, is what obstacles have you faced as a black woman candidate running for city council? And we can start with Sheba, going to Latina and then Tiffany. What obstacles have you faced as a black woman candidate running for city council?
Where do I start? Basically, as a grassroots campaign, um, it is difficult to get funding, especially during a pandemic. My community has been devastated by not only, um, the pandemic, but prior to the pandemic, my community was, um, facing, uh, fin- financial difficulties. So being an impact, I always think of people first and then myself. Sometimes to my detriment, but always, I'm always ABC. Um, I'm always, I'm always be choosing, um, for my greater good. And the greater good is that I think about people, um, and their financial resources prior to, before, um, myself. And so it's been difficult getting, um, the, the funding from my in-district, uh, contributions, which we need to hit a threshold of 75, um, and then also, um, $5,000. So right now, um, I'm just in the process of calling, um, those people in my community that, um, I believe, um, are able to, um, donate. So it's just the financing and it also, um, because I'm an unknown and I'm a curveball, the machine of Manhattan, it is, it's difficult to get attention. And I'm thankful that the people on the streets, and I call those the, the, the people who I really want to know, because they're the ones who are affected by the decisions that are made, um, in city council, um, and by, at the state level. So getting to be out here with the people, that has been easy. It is getting to, um, the elected officials who are entrenched and who have banded together to select the certain people they want to run. And that's fine. But again, I'm not going to give up. I'm going to stay, be steadfast in, um, and disciplined in, um, the plan that I have for myself and for my community. And people can see from my heart. And one thing, I'm different from any other, uh, challenger, is because I don't take money from PACs. I don't take money from real estate lobbyists. I am truly a grassroots campaign. I am for the people, by the people, and it's all power to the people, um, when it comes to me and my community. So the difficulty, um, wanting to be connected, because we all live within, uh, uh, the district, does not really, um, move me to, to be weary. I won't ever get weary. I pursue, um, the avenues that are beneficial to me and the people see my heart. And one thing, again, that I'm different, I would do this job in city council for free, because I know that my community needs someone like me who believes in our kids, have natural abilities that are purposely not manifested. So they become, um, critical thinkers, um, innovators, out-of-the-box thinkers and citizens that are productive and who become entrepreneurs, as well as college-educated young people, so they can pick up the mantle and that baton and move on to their assignment in life to help our society get better. So we're talking about negatives. What are the challenges? The challenge is people not wanting new blood in a, a district that has entrenched and had, is a political machine. And people like me who have integrity, who can't be bought, who's not going to give up, who's going to keep pushing and who has a plan for the betterment, not only for some, but for all. And so the challenge is stopping me. That's the challenge.
Wow, that was very powerful, um, Ms. Sheba, and thank you for sharing that with us. I too can relate. Um, I'm also going through, um, the very same struggles. Fundraising is one of them. But it shouldn't take a pandemic for people to realize that poverty has been an issue in my district before the pandemic. And now I see that, you know, elected officials and the powers that be are using this pandemic for their own personal gain. But you, you, you let our districts suffer. You let the people suffer for so long. And, and I, I, I can't see myself taking a dollar from residents who are, who are barely trying to make ends meet. We have a very serious issue with food insecurities. And I have been feeding the community since the very beginning of this pandemic. So how can I, you know, will myself to take, you know, their last $5 that they need to buy milk, eggs and bread to take care of their families? That's one of the very obstacles. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do what I can as a leader to take care of my community with or without them. I've had to turn to outside help to provide me with access to food so I can feed my community, because at that time, there was, you know, the 2020 elections and, you know, um, the powers that be and candidates who are aligned with these, um, you know, politicians were able to get access to resources to their community. And therefore, my community was left out in other areas. So you have some areas flourishing and then you have, you know, areas like mine, District 17, we've been suffering for, for decades. I have the largest immigrant population in my, in my district. Mostly, um, you know, the African community. We have a high population of, um, Dominicans. Most of them are undocumented, so they're not getting these resources. I'm not going to take a dollar for, from them. It's, it's, if, if they decide to donate by the grace of God, I'm very grateful for it. But I have to focus on making sure that they're getting these resources. And I just, I blame the system and I blame, you know, these leaders that we have now in, in, in position. I blame them for a lot of things, but I have to try and, and do my best to make it right, because I have a daughter. They have children. You know, we have senior citizens who've lived in this community for over 30 years. It's, it's time that, you know, we step up to the plate. I don't, I don't need to attach myself to them. And I think that that's one of the, the biggest, like, hardship for me right now is, you know, just one person, myself, going up against this, you know, this, this, this political machine. And I'm so grateful to have the support from the single moms in my district, because I can relate. We, we relate to, you know, to each other. And we've helped one another out during this, you know, entire pandemic and we're still supportive of one another. And I'm going to continue to do, do so, because in my district alone, we have the highest population of single mothers in this district. So this is mothers coming together and we're at a time right now, we need to band together and be, you know, be that united voice. So, um, it's a struggle. It's been a struggle. And I, I thank you for sharing your story, Ms. Sheba and Shaniqua. Thank you for asking the question, because not too many people care. I, I find that more and more, uh, you know, um, political action committees, all they care about is how much money did you raise? If you didn't raise enough money, then you're not serious. You're not a viable candidate. And, 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 and that's shameful. What about the integrity? What about being genuine? You know, what about the, the, what about the caring part? What about caring for other people's needs? And I think that, um, you know, I start to, you know, uh, go through this journey and, and I realize that, you know, this political game, it, it's getting very ugly. It's getting very ugly and it's very, it's very sad to see, you know, um, political leaders play with people's livelihood, play with people's, um, you know, uh, health. This is a very serious thing and we need to take this very seriously. So I'm going to turn this over to Tiffany and thank you so much.
Well, I too want to thank you both for sharing your stories. I, I think it really empowers me to make sure that I am always helping, you know, another woman get to the next, next step. It's interesting. I, I often live by these two mottos. About a couple of months ago, I had a, I had an opportunity to speak with, um, some troops, some Girl Scouts across the city, and as they were working to get their civic leadership badge. And I left them with like these two nuggets. And I told them these nuggets, because they're essentially the nuggets that, you know, I kind of live by every day. So the first one is do it scared, right? So, um, you know, running for office is not for the faint of heart. It can be scary. It can be even scarier when you are, um, not a traditional candidate. You know, I, I would certainly consider myself to be a non-traditional candidate. I've never held a particular, uh, political office before and this is the very first time I'm running for office. So, you know, there is always going to be an element of doing it scared and you just have to do it. I mean, you gotta do it. It's gonna be scary. Sometimes you're gonna make mistakes and you just gotta go for it, right? Because, you know, you don't want to ever be in a place where you feel a, a level of regret that you didn't do anything. So I am thankful that each of you have, you know, not necessarily throwing caution to the wind, but you have decided to run your race in your district to represent your community and you're going to do it, you know, regardless, right? So I, I appreciate that. Another tip that I left them with was, um, you know, lift as I grow. And you'll, you'll, maybe you'll hear this as lift as you climb, whatever you say. I prefer lift as I grow. So as I am growing, um, on a personal, professional level within my, you know, political campaign, I want to make sure that I am, you know, lifting others as I grow, right? So, you know, Sheba can tell you, like, I, I got a piece of, uh, piece of information that I thought it would be beneficial for her. So I was like, let me forward her this email so that she can always, she can also benefit from this, right? So, um, you know, I, I live by those two mottos and I think it's going to take me far. I got hope, right? I got full, I'm full of hope. Like many of you, the process of running for public office, of course, you know, is going to involve a level of fundraising. Thankfully, we do live in New York City where there is a campaign matching funds program. But before you meet that, you know, qualify for those, um, those funds, you do have to meet several thresholds. So I would say to you, especially as we're in Black History Month, anybody who's looking at this now, anybody who's looking at this later, if you are moved by not only one of the candidates that you see here today on this platform, but any candidate, you know, visit their website and donate to them. And it does not have to be much. I think President Obama was, you know, the person that really, um, showed us the power of grassroots fundraising. So don't think just because you don't have, you know, $100 to give to somebody, that your $10 or your $5 is not going to be beneficial, because it surely, it surely will. So, you know, think about that. Who is somebody I can donate to today? And we have heard so often since the 2020 election, and even now, that like, black women have saved us or black people saved us, particularly black women saved us, right? So, you know, black women, you know, thinking of Stacey Abrams and the Fair Fight Organization and all the other grassroots organizations, um, you know, Black Votes Matters, you know, things of that nature who are on the ground. Many of these organizations were led by women. They were led by black women. So if you are of the belief that black women helped save our democracy, that, you know, we are the reason that, um, you know, Joe Biden is now President Biden, that we are the reason that, you know, we now carry those two Senate seats in Georgia, this is your opportunity to go out and support a black woman candidate. So you just don't have to, you know, repeat the rhetoric that black women saved us. You can help the next black woman get elected to office, right? And you can do that, you know, by fundraising. And you know what? There are going to be some people who just cannot give to you. As, you know, many of the ladies before me mentioned, we are in a global pandemic. Many people have lost their jobs. People who are working their hours may have been cut and they may just be making it. But you know what? There are other things you can do. In the world of virtual, we've all gone virtual because of COVID, right? That means you can phone bank for a candidate, right? You can gladly be a part of their phone banking operations, where you're helping them call people in their community to let them know why you support the candidate and why they should support a candidate, right? So there are some things that you can do. So, you know, I have, you know, ran against, ran up against obstacles while running, you know, for, you know, city council. My particular seat that I'm running for is an open seat. The current council member is term limited. So yes, that means an open seat. A lot of people are running for that seat. So it is a, you know, so it is a constant reminder that I have to make sure that I am, you know, my name, my face is out there in front of the voters, in front of people, so they know who I am. And they pick me out of the one of, you know, eight candidates who may be in my particular race. So yes, that can be stressful at times. That can, um, you know, you could even, you know, get to the point where you are feeling, um, defeated. But you know what? I try, I don't let that get to me, right? I am, um, you know, I pull from within me, you know, that power that I need to move forward and I pull from within my, my circle of, of, you know, of, of friends, right? I mean, thankfully, I have people that I can text in a moment and they can send me some encouraging words of, you know, encouraging words or Bible verse, whatever it may be. And I'm able to move forward and I'm able to keep doing this. Because I know at the end of the day, everything that we are doing, myself, you ladies included, it's for the greater good. It's for the people within the community. It's so that you can be a voice for those who may be voiceless. So, um, you know, we gotta keep hope alive.
For sure. Yeah.
Thank you so much, ladies. And I do see that some people join us via Zoom. So if you are on Zoom and you do have some questions for any of us, you can use the Q and A part of Zoom to drop your questions in. And I'll be looking out for them as well as the other panelists here, so that we can hopefully get to those questions. So I'll be answering that same question that I asked everyone, which was, what, um, struggles have you had as a black candidate running for city council? So for myself, it, it's a very loaded question and I am trying to think of where to start. But I think I want to start from the place of sort of what, what I said in my statement, which is, running for office as a black woman feels like, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you there. I think for me, that sums it up, because, um, I'm actually in my second, uh, election cycle. Last, last election was special elections and, um, I actually became a writing candidate, because I was actually knocked off the ballot, um, because of some other reasons, which I'll be revealing probably in the next slide. So make sure you come back. And so for me, I think that having all this passion and all of this energy and just wanting to see change and wanting to help my community and knowing that I can, that I'm capable of doing it, because of what I was able to bring to the table. I think for me and being a black woman, it was just never enough. I can remember one time I was door knocking in the middle of the pandemic and I was talking to a prospect, like a potential voter. And I was like, you know, doing that quick one-minute platform that we all know we have to do, right, candidates? We, we gotta like, not like drilled down that one minute, like, come on, give it to me. And she stopped me in the middle and she goes, "You don't have to persuade me. You're out here." She goes, "I can see you." And that was all I needed. I just wanted to be, I wanted to be acknowledged and seen for what I was doing, right? So I and my great team of volunteers who were not paid, we knocked on over 10,000 doors in the middle of the pandemic. We definitely practiced social distancing. None of us got sick with COVID, thank God. Um, and we were, you know, always practicing in health and, and safety precautions. But this was something that we did. None of us paid for it. And in fact, which many people don't know, when you're, when you become a writing candidate, you are not eligible for public matching funds. So that means I funded my own campaign, myself and amazing volunteers that believed in me and that was like, Shaniqua, I, I believe in you. And they gave me the money, because I, I wasn't eligible, eligible, excuse me, to have public matching funds. So I had to raise thousands of dollars between my, my volunteer team and pulling it out of my own pocket as a single mother. So there were a lot of challenges, being a black woman running for office, trying to juggle between parenting, um, remote learning and my daughter and making sure that she was in school, having to sit with her for eight hours and then trying to find a babysitter while door knocking, you know, being out there canvassing and getting petitioning signed. And it was a lot. There were many times that I ended up getting sick, where it felt like I was having really bad migraines and I was, it was very sleepless nights and I was doing so many things myself. And I really just needed someone to help, right? And not discounting my team, because I had an amazing team. They were, I mean, and they're still with me. They're amazing. Some of them are actually on this call right now. But I, I want to say that being a black woman running for office, I wish I would have gotten more support from people that were also black women, which is why we're joining together, um, tonight. Because I think a lot of times as black women, when we see each other's struggle, we're like, "Oh, you got this, girl. You know you can do it." Because I think a lot of times as black women, when we see each other's struggle, we're like, oh, you got this, girl. You know you can do it. You know, we become immune and numb to seeing black women struggle to the point where we feel like they, it's supposed to be that way. They can handle it. They're resilient. They're strong, right? But you know what? We have to decode that stereotype and that myth because we might be able to do it, but at what cost, right? We need to learn how to band together as black women and support each other. And when we see each other maybe needing a helping hand or maybe going down, we should be there to support each other. So I think, um, for me, again, there was a lot of challenges. And I also want to echo the sentiments of the, um, my colleagues and my, my friends here and that is finances, right? And I mentioned it before, having to fundraise and having to bring in money. Let me tell you, running a campaign is expensive. It is expensive. It is very, very expensive. Just to send out one mailer is expensive. So even if you feel like, you know, and I know Tiffany was talking about this earlier, even if you feel like you can't support a candidate financially, you can support by volunteering. One hour, I can promise you, we are so grateful for it. It goes a long way. So even if you're not able to uh, donate financially, there are so many other things you can do, like sharing our message on Facebook and social media, like encouraging us. Like I soak, I'm telling you, w- running for office, you soak in encouragement because you need it. You need to hear, keep going. You need to hear, you're doing a great job. You might know it, but you need to be reminded of it because sometimes you're giving and you're pouring out so much and it becomes very, very stressful and overwhelming. So all in all, what I want to say is, um, my struggles have been just in every way. Um, struggling between being a single mother and being a candidate for office, struggling between being a woman and being a black woman and constantly feeling overlooked or ignored. And then just not having the finances to be able to really run a good campaign that like, like, you know, like I wanted to. But this is a new election cycle, so that's all I'm gonna turn around, guys. So. So that is my side, but let's run into our second question and we are about 20 minutes away and I see questions also coming into the um, Q and A. So we will get to those in just a moment. Uh, my next question for um, the woman here is, what does it feel like being a black woman running for office? So this is more, you know, your, your emotions and your feelings. Um, what does it feel like being a black woman running for office? And this time we'll go backwards. So we'll start with Tiff, with Tina, and then we'll end with Sheba and then myself.
Well, I, I, thank you for that question. I really appreciate it. So I talked earlier about how, you know, I am always moved to make sure that I am civically engaged and participate, um, you know, in the electoral process because I'm just really motivated by the fact that, as I mentioned, my mom was born and could not vote. So that pushes me so much. Um, it brings me pride to know that I, as, as a black woman, is running for office. You know, I have received just, you know, words of encouragement, positive feedback. Um, let me tell you about the other moms, right? You know, not every mama, but a lot of moms have been like, oh my goodness. Um, you know, you are, it's so encouraging that you are running for office, you know, considering that you are a mom and a partner and you have other, you know, things on your plate, but you've decided to also bring this on your plate and commit to it. So that's been absolutely amazing. It's brought me a source of pride. And just to bring it a little local, um, back to my district of District One in Manhattan, running for office, you know, um, should I be elected to represent this community? I would be representing a community that houses the African burial ground, right? It is essentially a burial place for, you know, enslaved Africans who worked the lands of Lower Manhattan, right? So that is their burial place. That is, you know, their final homegoing. Um, and so it, you know, that fills me with pride that, you know, this piece of, you know, American history, New York City history is right in the back, my backyard and right in a district that I would represent. You know, it is not also, you know, lost on me that this is the same district where, you know, enslaved Africans were once sold, you know, to the highest bidder, you know, right on Wall Street as a piece of property, right? So I mean, that just brings me so much pride that at one point, you know, there were people who would be considered my ancestors, who were, you know, property, but now come full circle, you have someone who would represent the district, right? So it brings me so much pride, um, you know, in that aspect. And I've had to pull on that pride at times when I have felt, you know, as though, whoo, you know what? This is a lot. You know, you, you speak about how sometimes you have felt invisible as a black woman. I remember one of my best, very first candidate forums that I participated in, there was a um, a press write-up about it, you know, a couple of days after. And that press write-up talked about all the candidates. It even talked about a candidate that didn't participate in the candidate forum. But guess what candidate it did not mention at all? Me. One of the candidates who were a part of that forum. And I, I reached out, you know, and I wrote a letter to the editor. And thankfully, I had a supporter who said she reached out to the editor because she also read that article. And so that could have been the very moment that I decided, you know what? I'm being ignored in this process. I should not participate in this process. But I did it. I pulled from that source of pride, knowing that, you know, I could one day represent this community that has so much history as it comes to, you know, African Americans and black Americans, and I powered through. And so, you know, that's what I'm gonna do until our election day on June 22nd. I'm gonna continue to push and power through. So, for sure. Yeah. Thank you, ladies. And I think Sheba, you're up next. Or is it Latina? Who's going next?
Well, that is a fully loaded question. Being black feels amazing. I, I, I can't, I can't even begin to describe how good it feels. And being that I'm a Afro-Caribbean black woman, that's like amazing. So, you know, um, running for this seat is, 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 of course, is, is sending a new positive message to many of the mothers in the district. Um, when elected, I will become the first black woman to hold this seat. And um, and I will fight for it. Uh, my daughter, she looks at me every day and I think it's so amazing when your own child tells you how proud of, how, how proud they feel. I, I got that so twisted. I'm sorry. Because I'm so excited and I'm just like, my daughter, she just looks up to me and she, you know, appreciates so much that I'm doing in the community because she's out there with me. When we're feeding the community, my daughter's with me. And she tells me, mommy, I'm so proud of you. You're doing the work. You know, um, you're my superhero. You're like superwoman to the kids. And the children, they come to me, they tell me that they, they're proud of me and that I'm like their leader, their mentor. They want to be like me when they grow up. To me, that means a lot. It says a lot. And it tells me that the community is ready for change. And, you know, I'm, I, I think change is good. And there may be, um, uh, some people who are a- against change, who are afraid of change. But change is needed for this district because this dis- district is so rich in history. And it is important that we continue, you know, um, talking about our history because I too live in a district that has a slave burial.
That's right.
And no one talks about it.
That's right.
It's, it's ignored. It's not being discussed as part of a, an educational curriculum. It's not being discussed to our children. This is something that I want to be able to, you know, incorporate into our community. This needs to be part of our Black History Month. There is a Hunts Point Slave Burial right here.
Right.
And no one is talking about it. All, our communities were named after former slave owners. Why are we not talking about it? The movement isn't over yet. We have to continue to fight and we have, it starts within our own communities, within our own backyards.
That's right.
Don't just come out when it's just, you know, um, a, a moment where, you know, one of our own is, is being gunned down. I would never want to see that happen again, ever by, you know, a, a law enforcement. We need to be fighting every day because we're fighting for our future. We're fighting for the future of our children. So being a black woman to me is awesome. It's amazing. There are times where I've had my low, low moments. I felt like, you know, you know, I wasn't good enough. You know, I've been called many names. I mean, every name out the book, just for being an Afro-Caribbean black woman running for this seat. And, and, and it's very shameful. Um, I saw an article that came out, I think it was like several weeks back, and they talked about the race, um, this, this District 17 race. I'm not gonna mention who the, the, the reporter is. But he talked about, he focused on one person, which was the incumbent. And he didn't talk about the other candidates in this race. We all, we are all bringing something to the table. And I think it's important that, you know, um, the residents get a chance to know who we are and what we're trying to bring to the table.
That's right.
Give us all a fair chance. Don't just focus on one because, you know, he's becau- sorry, I, I, someone just called me. Because, you know, this person is established with the, the whole, like, you know, political machine. I think, I think that, you know, our constituents and just our people in general, we need to start paying attention. Look beyond, you know, the, the known, ha- house, house known name. Get beyond, get past that and see what have they contributed to the, to our community. Um, so, yeah, but I'm, it's, it's not gonna stop me from, from running for office. I'm gonna continue to push and continue to do all that I can for the people. I'm gonna continue to feed the people. I'm gonna continue to, to be that backbone in my district, no matter what. And I, I encourage all of you ladies to continue with the fight and do not give up. And don't ever let somebody tell you that you're not good enough to stay in this race. Thank you.
So I am in a- amazement, um, sitting here among you women. Um, I feel like every story is my story. Um, I feel connected to you. And I am a proud black woman. I'm not gonna use the word strong because strong is, comes from a place of trauma because we've had to be strong because we were overlooked for so long. And we are the backbone of our society. I don't care what anyone says, we are. And with that being said, again, I am a proud black woman. I come from a lineage of proud, um, black people. My mother, um, was from birth in Vicksburg, Mississippi, which was the turning point of the Civil War. Um, and so I know that, um, my people had a powerful, um, role in making that happen. And so with that, my mom migrated here with my maternal great-grandmother. And, um, I'm thankful for her because, um, you know, I'm, I'm not afraid to say it. I have really bad eyesight, but I'm thankful for my great-grandmother telling my mom to go, um, and get my eyes checked. And at three years old, uh, two, excuse me, two years old, um, my mom took me and the doctor told my mom, oh, she's blind. She can't see. And my mother said, no, she can see. You just can't help her see properly. And so I remember that. Two years old, I remember that. And, um, when I was in, um, commuting to work, I passed that area of the, uh, place where, um, that doctor's office was. And it makes me smile, um, because I wish I could find him and show him who I became in this world. This little black girl that he, um, just wrote off because he couldn't or didn't want to do his job, whatever it was. Um, I think, uh, because I'm the only girl out of five, um, I'm, uh, have four brothers, one is deceased. Um, I learned how to be tough, quick. Um, that's why I have a great left, right hook and a great uppercut, right? Because I had to fight my way, um, through life. And my lived experiences, regardless of, um, any licenses that I've, I've had that expired or, um, opportunities that were purposely taken from me, God has me sitting right on this panel with some amazing women who are going to do amazing work, who are doing amazing work in this society. So when people look at me, they don't, I, I never want them to feel that they're looking at someone who is in need. I get everything that I need from my family. I get love. I get encouragement. I get strength. I get, uh, determination. But one thing I got from my mother, and that is cu- courage. My mother gave me the courage of an alligator, a lion and a pit bull, all wrapped up in one. So when people think that they're going to tell me what I'm not gonna do, I'm gonna show you what I am gonna do. And what I am gonna do is work for my community. As I said in the top of this, um, um, live, I would work and do this job for free. That's how determined I am to win this seat because I know that my, my community needs someone. There is a story that I always try to get into, um, let people know. I, uh, tried to talk myself out of running, um, when my, my only daughter got pregnant with triplets. And I was talking to, um, she's, I consider her, um, my friend and I always call her name, Tiara Stewart. She is the regional director, um, for Fellows, for, um, Ignite National, who put me on the path to my leadership. And she said, I'm not mad at you, Sheba, for, um, not running. She said, but I'm gonna say this to you. Regardless of what you do, someone is gonna take that seat. And do you want them to be pe- a person who will lead your, your, your community down in a direction that does not support what they need? And at the end of the day, your people are gonna need you. And that sat with me for months and months. And then when I saw how amazing my daughter was as a mom, I, I could no longer, um, sit still and not do what I, I'm called to do, which is to serve. And when I say serve, I don't mean it comes from a place of, um, I give to everyone and I, I, I leave myself empty. When I say serve, I'm here to serve in a way that is transformative for my community. Not just for the people who have been here for generations. It's for that new, um, young person who comes into, um, Harlem and, and has a dream of being successful. It's for that, um, couple who has said, this is going to be where they're gonna raise their family. It's for that senior who has been widowed, who, um, doesn't know that there are services that can make her or his life easier. It's for myself. It's for everyone who calls themselves a Harlemite. So when I say that I'm proud, I'm proud not only to be a black woman, I'm proud to be a Harlemite. I'm proud to be a New Yorker. I'm proud to be Harlem and, and New York tough and New York strong. But more importantly, I'm proud to say that there are people who didn't know me a year ago, who know me now and who support me 100 to 10%. And it may not be financially support me, but they support me whenever they see me and they say, I believe in you and you got my vote. So when I turn around and I look at faces like Shaniqua's and Latina's and Tiffany, I'm seeing me and I'm seeing my community because there are, God doesn't put us all in one pocket. Just like Michelle Obama said, God didn't give one group of people all the intelligence. So he couldn't put all of our greatness in the same borough, in the same districts because they, God knew and the universe knew that there were people who need, need us to do the work that not that they can't do, not that they don't want to do, but that they may just not have the resources and awareness for on how to get it done. And so again, I'm proud to be who I am. I'm proud to come from every, um, challenge that has been placed in front of me because I believe that a delay is never denial. We've been delayed in our success in our communities and, and the success of our children, in the thriving of our communities. And now we're the shape shifters. We're the change agents. We're shifting the narrative. And we're saying, this is our Harriet Tubman moment in history and we're gonna go forth to freedom and we're gonna take everyone along who wants to come along. Thank you.
That was really powerful, Sheba. Thank you so much for that. We actually are at the end of our time, so I'm going to answer the question as fast as I can. And then I'll let everyone have about five seconds to leave some words of wisdom. And then moving forward in our next lives together, we'll talk more about our stories, um, in, in the coming weeks. So I want to, um, say that I echo the sentiments of these amazing, incredible women. I absolutely love being a black woman. It feels amazing. Um, you know, we are, I often say that black women, regardless of what we go through and oftentimes being invisible and being the last, being counted out, or they just have facing double jeopardy in everywhere we go, whether it's in home, whether it's at work, wherever, um, there's always that double jeopardy that we face. But I think regardless of that, we're able to pull through. We have, I think we perform so amazing under pressure. We are so creative. Um, there's something so magical about being a black woman. I am grateful that my mother I am grateful that my mother taught me what it means to be a black girl and be a black woman when I was only five years old. She instilled. A lot of um values and wisdom in me. And watching a lot of black women raised in church and other places showed me what it means to be a black woman with uh that was. A woman of grace and integrity. So I absolutely adore proving people wrong, especially when they see me. And um and they're like, they hear me talking, they're like, wait a minute, what's going on here? Because they didn't expect me to say what I said or to sound as powerful or as intelligent. Oh, I love the faces when I go into rooms, you know, looking like, what are you doing here? Um or I love the fact that, you know, I run an organization that serves thousands of kids a year that I started with my own hands. And when people ask me, so who was the founder? And I say, you're looking at her and the face, their face, their jaws drop. I I love that because I think that being a black woman, we constantly prove people wrong. And so I embrace being a black woman, running for office as a black woman, I think is necessary. There's not a lot of black women um in office right now in New York City. And in New York City Council, there are only eight women. And there are not, they're just not, not enough of us in city council. So we have a job to do. We have work to do as a community to help black women get elected. Because we know when black women are in office and in leadership positions, we get the job done, no questions asked. Like we get the job done. We're able to multitask. We're able to bring so much to the table. And so we have to be able to recognize that and really come together and support black women in this upcoming election. And so um we're out of time. We're two minutes away from um ending tonight. But what I want to do is transition really quickly to to our closing statement. And I would like each of us to say something. I'm like, uh this is gonna be a little hard, but in like ten to twenty seconds. Words of advice, like what is that? Uh ten to twenty seconds, words of advice that you can give to those that are watching. Um this evening, starting with, we'll start with Tiffany, Latina, Sheba, and then I'll close.
You know, I'm mute, babe.
I'm mute. I'm trying to make sure you guys don't hear my little ones in the background. Well, uh thanks again for having us here tonight. I really appreciate it. I want to just close really quickly and answer a question that I saw was asked by one of the attendees and it said, from a candidate perspective. Um what can fellow, you know, black indigenous women of color do to support your campaign? In creating a systematic pipeline for others um like us? So, you know, I mentioned earlier that, you know, support is always needed. It's so cliche, um but I'm from the Bible belt, so I'm gonna say it, you know, say a prayer for me. I am, I accept any and all prayers. Does not matter your, you know, religion. Send them my way. Um number one, uh you know, another thing that you can do for candidates like us, make sure you show your support either financially or through volunteering. Um and I'm just gonna wrap it up and say that if you want to learn more about my campaign. Um please go to TiffanyForNYC.com. And on another note for New Yorkers, if you are not registered in a party, which means if you're not a registered Democrat. Tomorrow, February the fourteenth, is the last day to change your party status with the New York City Board of Elections. So that you can vote in the June primary. So a a good resource is to go to um NYC Votes. Whether that be on social media or to their website, and they can give you information about how you can check your registration status online. And if you're not registered um in a party, how you can change your registration by tomorrow's deadline. Thanks again for, you know, everyone being here, whether you've watched us on Facebook Live, if you've joined us on Zoom. And check out TiffanyForNYC.com to learn more about my campaign to represent uh District One on the New York City Council.
Well, I just want to say thank you to my lovely sisters for um inviting me um to be part of this discussion. I think that this is like, this is, this, this means the world to me. It's it shows sisterhood and. We have a long road ahead of us. Don't ever give up. I encourage all, all women to run for office. This is our time now. Twenty twenty-one is not the year or the time to come after black women. So I'm just putting that out there right now. Do not come for us. Because Sheba is my sister, Tiffany is my sister, and so is Shaniqua. Do not come for us. Show us some love, support us. We are just trying to do the right thing for the for the constituents in our community. I am your neighbor. You are my neighbor. Love thy neighbor. Let us all be respectful. Let's have a clean race. And we are just mothers who are just out here trying to get the work done. We're we're putting our all into our communities. We're dedicated. We're genuine. Please go and check out our we- websites. Please check out Latina Brown's website, www latina brown dot com. You'll see my uh bio, information about my campaign. June twenty-second, I say this to the millennials and to Generation Z. Please go out and vote. Our elders have been doing it for decades. It is our time now to put the action behind our words. So go out there, support your 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 candidate, support women for office, black women for office. There are many ways that you can support and and as um a follow-up to what Tiffany said, you can um donate. You can support by making phone calls. You can volunteer. There's many ways that you can help uplift black women. So thank you all for joining us tonight on this discussion. And I look forward to the next live so we can get into the gritty details about our campaign.
I'm gonna be very quick. Um please, um my sister said it all, but. Um for me, go to shebaforcitycouncil dot com, donate, um fundraise, volunteer. There are so many ways that you can support us. But when you hear our names, remember to think. That no candidate is perfect, no leader is perfect, but you have a perfect set of women here. Who's willing to do the heavy lifting, which black women have done for centuries. And so if you want someone who want, who who is going to um be that leader for you. Then whoever is living, whoever's here looking and we're in your district, vote for us. On June twelfth, that's early voting. And then prior to that, donate. Donate, donate your time, your service, because that's how we get into office. And thank you, Tiffany. Thank you, Latina, and thank you, Shaniqua, and thank everyone who's on this live. We appreciate you all.
Thank you, Sheba. Thank you, ladies. And my last words of advice echoing the sentiments of everyone else is please support black women. Um again, we're often the ones out uh doing everything, right? Um even behind closed doors, we're often not recognized for our hard work, for our achievements. And this is not the month to do that. It's Black History Month. Next month is Women's History Month. Support black women, please. Um pour into black women, whether it's a word of encouragement, again, whether you're volunteering or you're going to just donate. Let's really show up for one another. Let's be a support to each other because we need your support. We cannot do this without you. And we need your help. We have to bind together as a community and really work together to undergird each other and lift each other up. So we are at the end of our time. It went by so fast. So much fun. We had so much fun with you all. And this is just our first live. We're gonna continue these live talks. Hopefully every week it's going to be very busy for us. Um petitioning is starting in another uh three weeks.
Couple of weeks.
Yeah.
March second to the twenty fifth.
Yeah, those of you who are interested in helping out with petitioning or helping any of us out with um getting signatures. You can visit our website or reach out to us directly. And we just want to say thank you so much for all of you for watching. Thank you for your prayers. For your support, for your encouragement. We absolutely love each and every one of you and we're grateful that you've decided to spend this. This hour with us. So again, thank you. We'll be sending out the reporting and we'll be also promoting this video via YouTube and via. Other social media platforms. So God bless all of you. Happy Valentine's Day tomorrow.
Yes.
Yes.
Valentine's Day, everybody.
Happy love day. Like I told the ladies, every day is love when you have a heart full of compassion and empathy.
Yeah.
And I see some great things coming into the chat. Congratulations to all your work you're doing. Thank you for the invitation. It was awesome. Even a phenomenal woman. This is our history. Awesome Zoom meeting, ladies, and a lot of encouragement. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a great night, everyone. Ladies, stay on. We're gonna do a picture, but I'm gonna end the the live and um let everyone else leave out. So thank you, everyone. We'll be ending our live right now and then we have a great evening. Please stay tuned for the le- next live talk.
Good night.
Everyone, thank you.
So we'll do a picture, ladies. Which one of you?
Pictures, like a screenshot?
Yeah.